I go to be a couple of seconds early. So. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September meeting of the West Rock Hill Board of Supervisors. Uh, first meet, first point on the agenda is the call to order. Everybody is here seated and then good allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
And I say so in America. Consider our government which is hands. Why nation under God. In this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Uh, first, the first order of business is public comment. So if anybody in the audience has anything that they want to bring to the board's attention, uh, please come up, uh, come up to the speaker so that we can get your name information.
Hello, can you hear me? Roseanne Davis, uh, East Rock Hill. Um, I'd like to know, uh, when you guys are putting this on the ballot for November for the Holiday House, when you guys will have an answer? Because I would like to continue with fundraising for the Holiday House pool.
Um, whenever the election results are made official, which is a week or two after the election.
And then you'll have an answer. Whether you'll be.
Hopefully, yes.
You know, you'll, you'll have an answer of what the things, but you won't have an answer on what actually happens till November meeting. Am I correct in saying that? Because it would be discussed then. You'd have an answer of, of whether there'd be support, but as far as actually adopting something, it would have to be at a board of supervisors meeting. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, right. But I think I thought she was asking, when will we find out with the, um, uh, for referendum results?
Oh.
Everything. I mean, bottom, you're right. Everything. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And he's right. Um, the referendum results a week or two after the election.
Whether you're going to continue with, you mean that the residents approve, you mean your, the tax bill, I mean, tax increase, and then if you're going to continue supporting the Holiday House.
Well, I think the easiest way of figuring this is the referendum is we ask the voters for permission to move forward with the next step. So within about two, a week or two after that, we should be able to know whether or not the voters have given us permission. And if, after we have permission to do from here to here, then at the next meeting is when we start deciding, okay, where on that scale do we need to go?
Then fundraising should continue?
Yeah.
Well, whether or not you continue fundraising is a completely different question that is not, that is not for this board, that that's uh, your option as board members for the authority. Um, but at the November meeting, you should have an idea because, as he said, it's permission. It's not a mandate. Um, permission to, to borrow money, whether, what the board is going to pursue along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
And borrowing, and borrowing the money in the long term, when, you know, if we get permission from the voters to borrow the funds and we will work this out. When it comes time to actually do the repairs, we're going to have to either start working in September, right after the pool is closed, or we're going to have to take a year off while the pool is being rehabbed and updated.
Okay.
So.
I'm just curious because I have six of them lined up so far for, just for this year. And that's why. And I don't want to take small businesses' money for something that's not going to happen.
The current budget still has funding for West Rock Hill.
Okay.
Rock Hill still has currently budgeted funding for opening Holiday House Pool. Whether or not we have the budget to start doing the major renovations is the question after that question gets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, any other public comment, any other issues that residents think we should be paying attention to?
Debbie Rogers, um, I noticed on the engineer's report, um, number eighteen, I think it was, select properties is they put in a proposal like this past week for sewage. Sewage station, am I correct? And so it's just on there as a, you received a letter. It hasn't gone anywhere.
Going to be on the zoning hearing board, October second at seven P M. for a special exception.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the audience going once?
Hello, everybody. Lisa Oberg, thirty seventy State Road. This is a question. What are the plans for State Road? Between Quarry Road and three oh nine, I see roadwork. I hear rumors about turning lanes. I hear rumors about traffic lights, but nothing concrete, concrete.
State Road, State Road, the, there is a plan, um, for a traffic light at Meeting House and one fifty two.
Are you sure that's a good idea? Have you seen how backed up traffic gets there? There was just a a rear end collision there last night, right in front of Old State Road. About five o'clock in the middle of rush hour traffic. If traffic is backed up that far from three oh nine, how bad is it going to be from Meeting House Road? It'll be impossible to make a left turn from Lou Ray Circle, uh, from the fifty-five plus community and probably any houses along that road also.
We can have our traffic engineer take a look into it. It's part of the Wawa proposed development.
Is that a definite? Wawa?
Yes.
And if I chime in, we have several different developments that use that section of State Road between the proposed Wawa, between proposed industrial development and warehouses and unfortunate, and we have been trying to get a combined overview so that we don't have everybody else putting, it wasn't my fault. We aren't, we're only posing a little action. So we are trying to get everybody coordinated to get a good overall picture of, okay, if these, if all these disparate projects go through, what happens? And that's, that's where the question comes up, which is more for the traffic engineer of, okay, how much traffic are we expecting from this project, from that project, from Wawa? And then that's where we go and hear what PennDOT is going to say because uh, unfortunately, but I guess fortunately, it's not our road.
And, and for PennDOT, it meant the warrants at Meeting House and one fifty-two. It did not meet the warrants for a traffic light at Quarry.
Okay.
So PennDOT would not approve a traffic.
And I, and I thought there was a coordinated effort between all the groups that were looking for proposed development to work together and with PennDOT, come up with a master plan for that whole area.
Exactly. And that's why the traffic light is going at one fifty-two and meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any, any other public comment or questions? All right, moving along, uh, we have announcements. There will be an executive session after the end of this, uh, meeting, which will discuss real estate matters. So when the meeting is ended, we all have to leave instead of standing around talking because we have to continue business afterwards. We have a consent agenda and I will turn it over to Mr. Livingcut.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the consent agenda, you have the August minutes, the win plan review status, the actions on plans about to expire, emergency services report, building and zoning report, public works report, planning commission report, conservation committee report, and the treasures report, which I will read to the board. Um, the general fund, one million, six hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Highway aid, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and nine cents. Open space, one million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and two cents. The park fund, one hundred and three thousand, twenty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. The equipment fund, thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Highway capital, one hundred and forty-two sixty. Street light, forty thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty cents. The reserve fund, the general fund reserve, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. The American Rescue Plan Fund, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eleven cents. Open Space Manderfield, forty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Sewage Maintenance Fund, two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Stormwater Fund, seven thousand, seven hundred, two dollars and sixty-five cents. And the escrow funds, two million, four hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, having reviewed all of that information, I have no questions.
No, I have no questions either. I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented if no one else has any questions.
I'd none, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I. Hey, we get to confirm deployments. Mr. Jim Miller.
Three years ago, on May seventeenth, we turned on our solar ray out back and, uh, I've been giving an annual report, just to bring everybody up to speed. Uh, next page, Sheri. I want to make sure everybody understands the goals we had when we did this, to reduce carbon emissions, all set one hundred percent of the taxpayer funded electricity, reduce taxpayer expenses, which are about sixteen thousand dollars a year, and transparency and education, which is one of the reasons I'm here tonight. Uh, from a carbon emissions, we've reduced the township's output by four hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and forty-eight pounds in three years. And, uh, as of today, actually, we're well over five hundred and fifty thousand pounds. So we're doing very, very well on that. Uh, one of the things that fluctuates a lot is the cost of, of the, uh, solar, of, of the electricity from P P and L. So you can see that back in uh, three years ago, we were down, actually was a little bit below six cents when we first started because it changes every May and June. And you can see it shot all the way up to fourteen, almost over fifteen cents, and now it's kind of dropped down a little bit. That's one of the factors that actually causes the amount of money we were taking back in and the savings we have. It's, it's a lot of that. So I just want everybody to be aware that there are fluctuations and that's what causes changes every year on, on how much we save. Um, we produced in the first three years, a total of three hundred and ten megawatts of electric. You can see our annual goal was set at eighty-four megawatts, which is an average of how much we use over the five-year period before we actually installed the solar. That was our baseline. And we are well exceeding that every year. So it was one hundred, one oh eight, and now it's one oh one this year. Um, we're well on our way to be over, uh, another hundred megawatts this coming year. So. To look at the actual numbers, we, um, we use that, I'm sorry, net and virtual metering. Net metering is solar rays out back. We have a breaker in the basement, breaker box. The electric goes straight into that. So it's, it's a mix of electric coming in, electric going out. At night, the electric's coming in through the the generator, P P and L. During the day, it's going out from us because we're producing extra. The difference of that is the net of how much electricity we use. And in our case, we are exceeding our limit a lot. Um, and the virtual metering is something like the park, where the park is not actually hooked to that breaker box, but it has its own. So we can actually take the extra electricity that we're producing, which is banked at P P and L, and we can apply that electricity to other meters in the township. So with combination of that, we had, uh, the previous year is about fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen kilowatts, uh, uh, I'm sorry, dollars, those are dollars. I'm sorry those aren't lined up. I thought they were lined up. They are aligned, so. Um, excuse me, this year you can see the numbers are five, uh, five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars worth of savings because of the net metering or virtual metering, total of twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars over the three-year period. Then P P and L purchase our, purchases our excess electricity, and that's based on the previous chart of how much we pay for electricity. As that goes up and down, then they pay us a different rate. Uh, but they only pay us in May for all the electricity we've generated up to May. So you can see that as of right now, the last three years, they've paid us nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. And the solar renewable energy credits, that's something where we are allowed to sell our energy on the open market, the production of our energy on the open market so that electric companies can buy it and say, oh, that was our electric, even though we get to use it. So we're reaping all the benefits from it. They get to, they get to pay us for that privilege of saying it was theirs, right? So in total, well, we've saved fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars over the last three years. The initial system cost a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, a projected, uh, lifetime savings is over a half a million dollars over the, the total life of the system. And the projected R O I, uh, is about ten years. We had originally estimated it at eleven. So we're looking at about ten years, maybe a little less right now. We'll see how that goes over the next seven years. And there's been no maintenance, no repairs. So that's a quick summary. And, uh, I also wanted to mention, uh, from the point, point of view of the, um, transparency, we get a lot of press because of this. We're the only municipality in Pennsylvania that, that produces more electricity themselves than they use. And we may be the only one in the country, actually, because everyone else take, usually tries to get a percentage of their electricity produced. But I don't know of any other municipality. I know there's none in Pennsylvania. Um, so we got a lot of press for that. There's a lot of municipalities that are looking into this. And, uh, they call me a lot. They call Greg and Greg contacts me. So, um, we, we have our name out there and, and they get this information too, so they understand exactly where we are. I also want to mention that, uh, this past year, Exact Solar, who did our installation, did a case study on municipal, um, solar power. And they used us as their example because we're the only one. And they've been sending that all over, all over Pennsylvania to show people what, what, what they can do. So they're very happy with the results and so are we. Um, one other thing is the American Solar, uh, Energy Society has a national solar tour. And, uh, we've been asked to join that. So this year in October, we'll be part of that tour. Uh, if anyone wants to see, they can contact the township or contact me. And, um, that's, that's all I had. How's that? I, I did it in my five minutes.
I have a couple of questions, Jim. First of all, thank you. Uh, Sheri, can you go back to slide number five? I think that's the solar production?
Yes.
Okay, from that, um, I see our goal and I see what we've done. It looks like we're producing a lot more electricity than we currently use.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So then if you jump to the next slide, six, that equates in the dollars.
Yeah.
Um, are we getting the best results by having P P and L purchase the excess?
That's a yes and no question. If you go back to that other slide that shows the, the P P and L, um, rates, let's say June is right here and, and the cost went up. Well, that, when that cost went up, we were producing electricity at this rate. Okay? And then all of a sudden, June, when they changed it, that's when P P and L checks their numbers and says, okay, we owe you for seven, seven megawatts of electric or something. What's the current rate? Current rate's up here. So we're making money when that happens. So that's a good thing. But when you get out here and it drops, then you're making electricity at this rate. And now it's dropped down to here, so you're getting paid back at this rate. So the answer, the best answer is use as much electricity as you can. Because you never know what, where that's going to be. So if you can use, if you can use a hundred percent of your electricity, you know you're getting everything back for your dollar. Um, but once again, you're not really sure where that's going to go. So.
I think you answered my next question. It would be, it would be to our advantage to find other ways to use it. Just use it, right?
Yes, use it. And there are other ways to use it. Just the township did an energy audit before we started this project. So they knew the, the building was as energy efficient as it could be. We had everything sealed up. Um, and you guys all got involved in that. So, um, there were, having done that, there's not a whole lot more you can do in here. We're already running energy efficient lights. We're running, you know, everything is energy efficient in this building. Um, and everything in this building is running off electricity. We don't have any like oil or other, other fuels that are powering it. So it's all done with electricity. It's all being powered by the, the solar array. So the only thing you could do is start looking at, and just some ideas, you can look at the tools. What if, what if you need to replace, uh, a saw or something? And can, can you buy one that runs on the battery packs now? Because then you can charge them with the solar and you're not paying for any other kind of fuel. Things like that. That's a, that's a way to do it. I, I mentioned this before, and I know the township's not in favor of it right now, but if you start looking at electric truck, um, the Chevy trucks right now, they get four hundred and forty miles to a charge. They'll power my house. If I have a power outage and I have that truck, it'll power my house for three and a half weeks. Because all I have to do, I can plug it. I can just plug it right in to a two forty outlet, and that goes right into my breaker box, and I can power my house for over three weeks. So that electricity could be used for a lot of different things in the township. And, and like I was saying, the truck, and that, I'm not trying to push it. I just want people to understand. You don't pay for, you don't, we'll be paying for gas. You won't be paying for oil. You won't be paying for oil filters, gas filters. You won't be paying for emissions tests. All these things go away. All right? All you're paying for really is the truck and, and the maintenance is almost nothing. So you, you, you save a lot of money there also, but that's something for the future. I think once the trucks become more popular and we have some more, um, data on them, maybe, maybe the township will reconsider that. But I know there are, there are municipalities out there that are starting to use the, the Chevy work truck, the Ford work truck, um, for, for doing their day, daily stuff. They come with a, a two forty outlet in it and six one-ten outlets, you know, I mean, these trucks are built, built for, just to use the electricity in them. So you can use them for a lot of various things, but I understand the township's position.
So the bottom line, if we go to slide six, is we've saved almost fifty-one thousand dollars so far.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have no more questions.
Are there any other questions?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, next item, number five is committee reports. So Mr. Rice.
Parking wreck. All right. We got parking wreck. Just a couple of needs. Everybody knows about September Fest.
No rain.
September Fest, right?
No rain.
Say your prayers, be good, be nice, please. No rain. Um, not this Sunday, but next Sunday, June, uh, September, geez, I said June. September twenty-ninth, twelve to four, across the street at the park. Got a lot of great activities, all free. Um, lot of good events. Um, two food trucks, got a lot of, um, everything that actually I believe is on the website, Greg, right? So it's all listed on the website, all the events. I could go through them, but, and what we're going to have, um, listing of all our um, silent auction, corporate sponsors, or silent auction and raffles and stuff like that. Lot of good fun stuff. Um, Ferris and Fifi are going to be there. That's the coolest part, I think. But I don't know. Could be the clown, could be the balloons. I don't know. There's a lot of good things. Um, after that, two weeks after that, we have, um, uh, feature film in a fire, which is October twelfth, Saturday night, um, Transylvania Three. That looks like a pretty cool movie. I've never personally seen it, but I'm going to see it. So I think it's pretty cool. We saw some previews and stuff like that. So it looks pretty good. Um, and don't forget about the little free library over there. Share a book and take a book, you know? It's there for the use of, you know, I think there's, you know, I don't know how many books can fit in there, probably a hundred, maybe. But it's, it's for the use of sharing books and getting people to read and students, kids, all the way through different ages and stuff like that. So there's a lot of good things out there. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion. We accept the parking wreck report.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we get to our independent commission reports, chief.
Good evening. I have the, excuse me, I have the August twenty twenty-four activity report for the Penner's Regional Police Department. This department responded to eight hundred and eleven calls for service in the month of, uh, August. Three hundred and forty-six of them are in East Rock Hill Township. Four hundred and fifty-seven of them were in West Rock Hill Township. Eight of those calls are assisting our neighboring agencies. The department handled a total of twenty-five traffic crashes in August. Ten of them were reportable, fifteen of them were non-reportable. With thirteen of them occurring in East Rock Hill Township, the remaining twelve were in West Rock Hill Township. The reported crimes, I'm sorry, criminal activity first. We had thirteen crimes against property, twelve crimes against persons, nine crimes against society, and we had nine group B offenses. Um, the reported crimes included in East Rock Hill Township, one hit and run, two animal complaints, dogs off the leashes, one aggravated assault, one criminal mischief, one fraud, one harassment, one burning complaint, one sex offense, one terroristic threats, three charged, uh, three incidences of trespassing in East Rock Hill Township. For West Rock Hill Township, we had one DUI crash, an arson, aggravated assault, a burglary, four reports of criminal mischief, three reports of drug charges or drug use, um, two fraud reports, three harassment reports, a violation of a local ordinance, two public drunks, one sex offense, one charge, one call of terroristic threats, and three thefts and three trespassings in West Rock Hill Township. So in the month of August, we filed fifty criminal charges. One citation was issued for, uh, burning, violation of the ordinances, um, five charges of aggravated assault, eight charges of harassment, seven charges of simple assault, six charges of disorderly conduct, one DUI charge, one strangulation charge, one terroristic threat charge, one possession of an instrument of a crime, uh, one criminal mischief charge, two drug charges, two, three charges of drug paraphernalia, uh, four charges of theft of movable property, a charge of receiving stolen property, one charge of theft of secondary metals, um, a defiant trespass, two public drunk citations were issued, um, two confinement of dogs were, uh, citations were issued. And then we had two charges of possession of drugs with intent to deliver or to distribute. Um, our other police activities in the month of August were a hundred and sixty-six traffic enforcement details were conducted, a hundred and two citations were issued, eighty-eight traffic warnings were issued, two school checks were conducted, ninety-two park checks, sixty-one business checks, and officers participated or attended forty-four hours of training. So so far for the year of twenty twenty-four, the police department handled five thousand nine hundred and eighty-five calls for service. We handled a hundred and ninety-nine traffic accidents. Two hundred and thirteen offenses were reported. Three hundred and forty-six criminal charges have been filed, and our officers have attended or participated in nine hundred and twenty-six hours of training. Um, August was a pretty busy month for us. Um, and that would be your report for the, uh, police department for August.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, fifty criminal charges filed. That seems like a lot.
Yeah.
And it, it, regardless, I mean, not regardless, but the fact that it is, how does that equate to officer's time in court?
Um, it's not an easy question for me to answer for you. Um.
I mean, we have charges. Don't they have to go in and?
Yeah. So I mean, it depends on, I mean, that's not, that's not fifty individual people. That's fifty individual charges. So the charges could all be lumped in the one. So like, for an example,
All right.
The five aggravated assaults are all one, are all one complaint, um, one suspect. There's just five victims. Um, so I mean, I can't give you a flat number. I mean, officers probably spend approximately, I might say maybe fifty hours a month in, in, in court. I mean, that's for all the officers. Depends. It really depends on traffic citations as well. So I could probably calculate it for you, but I just,
I'm sorry.
I'm not prepared.
Don't mean to catch up, Greg. I just, I looked at that and it seemed like that's a huge number.
It was a busy month. They were, uh, August, the beginning of August was actually very quiet and then, um, the end of August, kind of, everything fell out of the bottom. So. But that happens. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I have no questions.
Thanks, chief. I don't have any questions. I would make a motion to accept the chief's report as presented.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, chief. Okay, next item on the agenda is the the independent commission joint wreck authority, which is given by me. Excuse me, gentlemen.
Why wouldn't you just get it from here?
You got a microphone.
That's true.
It's a better microphone.
So I sound more sonorous and okay. The West Rock Hill Joint, West Rock, uh, West Rock Hill Sellersell Joint Wreck Authority met on September fourth. Meeting was called to order. Uh, we had no public comment. Uh, at the current time, there was a negative balance of about seven thousand out of a budget of about two hundred and twenty thousand. We're looking, waiting for additional monies to come in. Uh, the main points for that for that meeting were we have fundraising coming up. We have four dates setting up for additional dine and donates to go towards fundraising. Uh, we've actually, in the last two seasons, have seen our fundraising go from zero to several thousand dollars, which is a huge improvement. We have had a lot of outreach and a lot of people doing a lot of good work, but we're also seeing that, uh, funding come in, seeing the notice and seeing the, uh, information about Holiday House getting out there. Uh, as of right now, the pool has been mostly winterized, pumped to shut down. Water has not been pumped out all the way. I guess we let it sit to see if we had any leakage. We haven't seen too much. Uh, most recent large event that we had was a flick and float, which is basically a movie night on Most recent large event that we had was a flick and float, which is basically a movie night on the water. We actually had a pretty, very good turnout. Had a new projector, had a new screen, showed Moana. Most of the kids really enjoyed it. We went through all the popcorn that we bought. All the kids were quite happy. We had our appreciation picnic on August the fourteenth. We had a slightly lower turnout than we had initially hoped. But it was nice to see a lot. We did have some of the guards, a lot of the volunteers, a couple of members of the Perkasy Borough of, sorry, Sellersville Boroughs council and some of the members. I guess unfortunately, we didn't get too much, too much of a response for West Rock Hill, so we'll have to send you guys out bigger embossed invitations next year. We had the doggy dip at the end of the year, so we got about twenty, twenty-five pets and owners afterward at the day that we were shutting the pool down. We just have the Gallery of Arts on last Sunday, which had a pretty good turnout of people. We had, I had the report, but I was down there for a short bit. It was pretty well attended. We had a pretty good location along with some of the other nonprofits and outreach. We had a work date on September twelfth. We are planning to show up for September Fest for West Rock Hill on the twenty ninth. Usually we have a set of tables with the Historical Society and then the Conservation Committee and then Holiday House. They're looking forward to reaching out to more people. For twenty twenty-five, we're looking at swim season preparation. And we're hoping to get a, moving forward, to look at at up to thirty thousand dollars as a realistic amount of contribution towards the pool. That would for short term go towards new liners and shells, new pump, updating the pool. First step towards doing that is getting a study to get grants and funding from the DCNR and other entities. I did want to briefly go back, since there is a ballot issue, a ballot referendum coming up to do a, I'm gonna try to do this pretty quick, but it stretches over fifty years, so this might take a minute or two. But to go over the funding in the background for Holiday House Pool, in nineteen sixty-eight, West Rock Hill and Sellersville created a Holiday House Joint Wreck Commission to study the idea. They found Holiday House site as the good place for locating Holiday House Pool. Initially was set up with a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar note, basically a mortgage. About two years later, that was then refinanced into approximately a three hundred thousand dollar municipal bond. At that point, both township and borough set up an agreement to fund this whereby the Joint Wreck Authority owned the property. Township and Borough then agreed to rent it out so that the Wreck Authority had a constant stream of income in addition to the operation of the pool. With the idea that the operation of the pool should be able to pay off most of the mortgage pay, of the bond payment. If the bond payment went lower, then the township and borough both agreed to split it half and half. Generally, the township and borough agreed to pay about fifteen thousand dollars per year. To make that easier and more current, based on inflation, if you think back nineteen thirties, a Model T cost about three hundred bucks. A nineteen seventy Ford Mustang cost about three thousand. A twenty twenty Ford Mustang basis about, is somewhere up around thirty thousand. So you can basically just add a zero to the nineteen seventy numbers. So when Holiday House first started out, township and borough both were in for fifteen thousand dollars, which in modern money equated to agreeing to invest about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year towards the pool for the thirty-year timeframe that the bond was being repaid. That eventually was then paid down, refinanced every five years. They rewrote the, they rewrote the lease between the township and the borough. The township and borough also agreed to cover any overage if the if the income from the pool didn't cover the payment. Then around two thousand, the note was paid off, and the contributions from township and borough, which had been locked in because it was a, it was a usually a standard refi mortgage payment, so we stayed at about fifteen thousand for twenty-something, thirty-something years without increasing for inflation. So right now, the budgeted amount is about thirteen thousand towards Holiday House Pool. In nineteen seventies, and if you adjust that for nineteen seventy dollars to current dollars, it's about thirteen hundred bucks for the amount that was initially put in back in the seventies compared, if you if you compare the fifteen thousand dollars that the township put towards this in nineteen seventy, and compare that to the current twenty twenty-four budget, we're talking about thirteen hundred dollars towards the pool compared to the overall budget. So there's a ballot item asking that we would reissue, reissue a funding amount to be paid through taxes, which would be up to three million dollars, which is essentially the same amount that initially the pool was expanded to back in the seventies when they started out for a hundred and fifty to just build the pool and building the rest of it and going through and building the rest of the recreation center cost another hundred and fifty, so they came up to about three hundred thousand dollars in nineteen seventies money. In twenty twenty-four money, that's gonna be about three million. Estimated if West Rock Hill did it ourselves, we expect that we would go in with holiday, with Holiday House Pool would be a half and half buy-in between the borough and the township. That's what the referendum is to give West Rock Hill the authority to investigate, how do we go about funding this? Because we now have a fifty it's one of those, hooray, the mortgage is paid off, but now you own a fifty-year-old pool, freaking clear. But we still have additional monies coming in. Going through the finances, we have a pretty extensive report by Mr. Krauthemel, and I'll try to summarize it. Borough and township put in, you know, usually about forty, fifty thousand dollars based on that amount, the Joint Wreck Authority puts together a budget of roughly two hundred and twenty-five, almost a quarter million dollars, so. And of that, we end up with about one hundred and ten thousand dollars, which goes to training and payments for the lifeguards, so. In contrast to some of the parks and some of the other locations where Sellersville and Sellersville and West Rock Hill both put out money towards parks, we actually end up generating about a hundred and ten thousand dollars in income and job training for the high school kids who are there learning CPR, learning management, learning to run the pool. This year, the initial idea was, the initial, no, the initial guideline was we expected to get about, Don can wave and correct me if I'm wrong, but we expect to get about a hundred thousand dollars in income from memberships. We got about eighty, but in return, we actually ended up making more than that by having day camps come in. As everybody knows, daycare is expensive. Day camps found that the pool makes a really good synergy with that because it's summertime and you're not gonna wanna have thirty kids sitting in a room. If you can put them in a bus and then take them over to a pool and let them run around, that's a, that's a really good win-win for the day camps and also for us. And this year, I think we've increased by, we've almost doubled the number of day camps that we were working with from what we were doing last year and the years before. So as of right now, the Joint Wreck Authority did request a contribution of thirty thousand to bring the Holiday House Pool up and make sure we end up with a positive number. That's a request from both, to both township and boroughs, I understand. And that would put us about ten, that would give us a starting amount of about ten thousand, because we were looking at having to do some updates. We were in good shape this year because the pool kept running. Everything was running. We actually ended up helping, being able to help out some of the other neighboring pools, Quigertown and Menlo, when they had equipment breakdowns, we were able to take it over and help them out. So overall, this year has been a pretty good year. During the hottest part of the summer, we had weeks when we were having about two thousand people a week coming into the pool. We had days with two fifty, three hundred. Towards the end of, towards the end of the year, when we did a half day, our numbers started dropping down because everybody was getting back to school. But overall, we had a very good turnout. Fortunately, it's, we are unable to get a very fine-grained breakdown of how many people are actually using the pool. We have numbers, but we don't have the breakdown so much between townships. We know how many people are members. But it's difficult, you know, the same way that, how many in July and August, do we have two thousand people using James Park in a week? I don't know. Do we, how many people do we have using the Druckenmiller Park in Sellersville? I don't know. We know that we get a lot of people coming in for the baseball games and using the pavilion, but trying to track down that point by point, how many people use the park. But so far this year, the actual guidelines that the Joint Wreck Authority was created for, which is provide a regional recreation center and pool, we seem to have done pretty good. We learned a little bit this year from how to better manage things, reaching out more. We are still looking at getting more event spaces and trying to use property more throughout the year. But overall, nothing broke. We opened up, we closed, and we're looking forward to opening again next year. That's it.
Thank you, Hal. For the detailed explanation, I did, I did ask, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. First question was, I asked last month on how many daily daily tickets were sold. You had, you had claimed to us that there were two thousand in a week. And then I looked at the numbers for the following week, and there was only like three hundred and something for the whole week. I look at how many people actually are season ticket holders? And this year, from the numbers that you provided to me, Sellersville had a hundred and forty-six season ticket holders. West Rock Hill had fifty-six season ticket holders. Non-residents.
Actually, that's memberships.
Memberships. Okay, so where's the season tickets in?
That's the
So what's, individual served, that doesn't, I thought that was something different.
No.
Fifty-six memberships representing a hundred and sixty-four individuals.
Because we have memberships, but our memberships can be for one person, two person, three person, five person.
I understand that. Just like if I buy a family of four, like I did, a family of four season ticket and donated it. You're counting then as four. That's a, that's one, that's one.
We're counting as one membership.
Okay.
And four individuals served.
And four individuals served. So, so I got you. I got you. So one hundred and sixty-four then individuals were served, West Rock Hill. Four hundred and twenty-three were served from Sellersville. And then the non-residents, there was a hundred and seventy-six tickets sold, and that served four hundred and forty-nine, which came out to a total of ten thirty-six. That's not counting your dailies then, which is why I had asked to, to, to have the daily tickets, the numbers of what we sell at a total.
That's hard to do because when things get busy, farms do not always get everybody up that's coming into the pool. They come in a large group. They do their best to count them. They have a clicker. All I can tell you is that when we predict daily membership, I looked at the base year of like twenty twenty-one, and we determined what percentage of total revenue daily membership equated to. We, we figured we based our budget on approximately thirty percent, and it ended up being thirty-four percent. So our daily membership was better than we had expected.
Okay. I guess I should be directing this towards Hal, but I am directing it towards the public. Because if you, if you don't know how many people used your pool, then how do you know how many tickets were sold, daily passes? Who's tracking the money then? If you, if you don't, if you have a clicker, if you're using a daily pass, don't you have to pay for that daily pass?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so, so how do you not know how many people use the pool? If you're paying for each pass that goes in?
We have a very good idea of how many people use the pool. I'm not saying that it's one hundred percent accurate because the people that are checking the guests in are teenagers. They're busy, they're doing a lot of things, and they don't always write everything down. We do collect the money.
Right, I understand that. That's why I'm trying to make this statement of you need to make sure you follow how much, how many people are using the pool and how much money you're taking in, because that generates on how, what your budget is and how much money you need. And if you don't have a handle on that, then
We have a good handle on how much we're taking in. We know exactly.
But you don't know how many? Okay, all right.
But we can't track, we can't assign that to who is coming in. Is this a West Rock Hill resident coming in for a day or two? And we have a hundred and sixty-four people from West Rock individuals, but right now, we don't have, we don't have a barcode scanning to keep track of how many people are using this in the same way that how many people from West Rock Hill use James Park versus what percentage of people from outside, and how many people do we have to assign percentages. Where the founding position was, we're supposed to be a regional park and make as many people happy as we can with as much money, with as little money as we can. And I think we're trying to get there.
You, you are, you are. However, you're charging for people to go in there. We don't charge people to go in the park. And that's the difference here. You're charging a daily pass to go in there. So I think it is important that you, you make sure you have the, you're paid for the passes that you sell.
We have, well, we're, you charge for daily access to the pool. We don't charge for use of the top lot. We don't charge for use of the basketball court. We don't charge for use of the playground.
Talking about that. You're talking about the pool.
I know, but this is, we're talking about, we cut the entire rec center. We have, we have the playground at the pool, that Holiday House is bigger than the playground over at James Park. The top lot is bigger than over there. We have the, we have volleyball court as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Hal. Appreciate it.
It's hard to, I know, it's hard to track down.
I'll make a motion to accept the joint record. We're just, I'll, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm standing because I gave your report. Okay, next up, Suzanne. This Suzanne Clark, our tax collector.
Speaking of money, sorry to report that for September, I've only collected eight hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents in our annual tax bills and ten dollars and sixty-nine cents for our twenty twenty-four interim tax bills. I do want to note that the installment, second and third installments have all been mailed to those who have applied for the installment program. The second installment is due October thirty-first, and the third installment is due December fifteenth. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'd make a motion. We accept Suzanne's report as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving along. We're up to number, no, to number eight, the engineer's report. Mr. Ballack.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item under the engineer's report is the demolition bids for twenty-one oh five Kinlo's Road. You had a chart in your packet. The little bidder was Passerini and San's Inc. at thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. You could see the itemization of what they'll be doing, closing the well, breaking into septic tank, the house demolition, garage demolition, cabin, shed, and the pool, and then upgrading, cleaning up the area. They provided all the appropriate documentation. I'd recommend that board of bids to Passerini, Passerini and San's subject to receive their insurance.
That includes all environmental concerns, if there were any?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make that motion if, if you choose. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for the short engineer's report.
You're welcome.
And the ninth section, solicitor's report, Mr. Everly, Mrs. Everly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an even shorter solicitor's report. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. And then we're up to number ten, manager's report, Mr. Wittencott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the MMO. Every September, produce a report of the minimum municipal obligation worksheet for the pension plan. You have it in your packets. It is for sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. I do not need a motion or anything. It just needs to be reflected in the minutes.
Can you repeat that?
It's sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-three.
Yes, okay, that's what I have. Thank you.
The next item I have is the Verizon Cable renewal service proposal. We have a proposal from Cowan Associates Law Group. If you want to go in with the county consortium, there's a breakdown on page thirteen of their proposal. Or the, if the board of supervisors so wish, we can write a proposal to Verizon, asking them if they would like to continue the agreement as written for another five years. Cost range anywhere, depending on how many people sign up with the consortium, anywhere from nine thousand five hundred. Um, if, if uh some, very few sign up, down to seven thousand six hundred.
Um, having read over this, it's free to talk to Verizon, and if we don't like what they say, then it might cost some funding.
Correct. So the recommendation that I have is um that you would ask me to reach out to Verizon to see if they'll sign a five-year contract. If they will not, then we uh sign up with the Coen.
I will actually make a motion regarding that matter.
I have one question. Is this time sensitive?
Uh, no, not really.
All right. I'm good.
Then I will second the motion. I'll call a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Good. Number eleven, new issue, same speaker.
Uh, the board has the American Rescue Plan Fund discussion. Um, this is the items that have to be allocated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, we had an original meeting back on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, and over the last couple of months, you have been discussing issues. At last month's uh meeting, uh you directed the township solicitor and the township manager to discuss um ways of setting up a fund for the fire company to um get more volunteers out for the fire companies. Um, after some discussions, I don't think there's a easy way to come into an agreement with the fire companies on how to do this. I would recommend that you discuss it with the fire companies at your fire panel meeting in October.
Okay.
We have a panel meeting when?
Uh, you, we, you have to send me the dates and then I'll send it, and then it will be publicly advertised.
Be October then, right?
Yeah, October.
I think we should do it in October, get it done. I agree, because this is something that needs, we had, we had, I had asked last month that we try to find a way to um tie this to training and um, training and recruitment in those aspects. So I think that is something that should be discussed with the chiefs uh here when we have that meeting.
Now, if there's a way of finding, of allocating funding to help the fire companies get funding, that's
I think that's what we all want to do.
Yeah. That is absolutely what we want to do. So I guess we'll table it until our next month, we'll revisit this.
Oh, well.
If we, if we have our, if we have our meeting with the fire companies.
We'll reach out though. We have to organize between all, between our, all of our schedules and all the fire chief's schedules, and we'll make sure we get something together for October.
It may happen before your Board of Supervisors meeting or shortly thereafter, your October supervisors.
Okay, fair enough.
I'd like to bring up um fact that we have started down this road um when we, we know we have a, a date that we have to meet, an end date before we lose money if we don't allocate it. So far, we've um given money to the uh community center. We've given money to the reconstruction of Mill Road, and we've given money to the reconstruction of the exterior of the house, Heritage House in the park. And I have um had conversations with the chief about what needs are there or possible needs are there for the, the police, police department? And I understand that the um officers have radios, the handheld radios that are at the end of their life cycle. They're old technology. Uh, some of the officers have to share. And we'd be probably prudent to replace them with new technology, and the cost of these radios is about seven thousand dollars apiece. Round numbers. I think there's like something like a sixteen or a six-week lead time to get them in. And if we were to support new radios for thirteen officers, I'm not quite sure that we, we have to do use the phased approach because we obviously don't have that many officers on call at one time. We do have people in the building. We do have people on the road and we do have, we should have a backup and we have, um, I would like to suggest that it, for discussion, that we consider buying seven radios this year as a start with some of the ARP funding. And that would amount to, in round numbers, fifty thousand dollars. And to date, we've spent three hundred and forty thousand in, I'm going to say in round numbers now, three hundred and forty-six hundred dollars in round numbers. Or the community center, Mill Road and Heritage House, we have around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars left before we would allocate any money to the police department. So we'd, we could do that. We could buy radios and we'd still have money for fire companies um and other possible suggestions before the end of the year.
Well, I just want to, uh, I think you have a good, a good idea there, David.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily run lose the opportunity for the money because if we didn't have it allocated, we could put it into the general fund. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Manager?
We would have to do a motion at the end of the year.
Right. To, to move into the, move it into the general fund.
Correct.
And we would not lose it. We would not lose it. We still have, would have the money. So we're not, we'd like to figure this out, but if we don't, we're not going to lose the money. The money doesn't go away. It stays there. But you do have a, a valid point.
My concern is um we would be to, if it goes into the general fund, I, to be sure that when we go into the next year, that this money is used specifically for that, for this purpose. And I see of no value of waiting three months. We we've been chipping away at this, with these other three areas, so why not just do it, get it done, and then we know what we have to work with for the rest of the year?
I agree with what you're saying. However, it would not be lost because you would have it under a line item. It would be a number. There'd be a number there, forty-fourth, four, four thirty-seven, something like that. You would have that money allocated in that line item, so you would be able to track it like we do track most of our, our numbers in our uh funds, in our other funds.
Well, given the fact that they're working with outdated equipment and there's a lead time, it, to me, it makes more sense to do it now.
Well, you're, you, we're talking about two separate issues there. I agree with you about, about considering funding for the police. I'm talking about the money in general, rest of the money.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, we are talking about two, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I said, incorrect.
That being said, um, I do think that radios are important, our, our fire services and our police are, are what this township needs to protect us and to serve us. So my my view would be that um I would support funding seven new radios, which would bring you, well, I would, I'll say fifty thousand dollars.
I would, yeah, I'd like to make that motion that uh we allocate fifty thousand dollars in the ARP funding for the police department, specifically for the use of purchasing officers' handheld radios.
I'm going to second that motion.
Before we vote on, I have one question uh to the chief. Is there any issues with the um Bucks County, Montgomery County radio frequencies and are, are these radios going to be stated the order? I mean, they're going to pick up everything we need, right?
They're not the highest level, they're not the, they're not the highest level of radio that we could purchase. Um, but there are sufficient, we, we set for it. Um, and just so I can flip back on the lead time, lead times were like twenty to twenty-four weeks, about six weeks. So, uh, I mean, we're not in a crisis here, but we have a few radios that are at the end of the light. Things are breaking on them. We added all to the department last month. I don't have a shortage of radios. We don't have spares. So, um, I mean, seven radios, that would be, that would be excellent. Excellent stuff for us, um, for three, for three issues on the pole. That was, that, that, that's a great, that's a great thing here you guys do, I appreciate it. Yes.
One question, chief, then. Are you able to phase in the new radios while still using the old ones until they finally?
I can phase the new radios in as soon as we get them.
Okay.
Probably takes a phone call to get them programmed. They don't even have to go anywhere anymore.
Okay.
From the time I get them to the time they're in service, we're talking a couple hours at, at the least.
Okay.
At the most.
And it's twenty-four weeks?
They told me between twenty, twenty-four weeks for the four that I ordered some new officer.
Are they made by the James Bond, Bond bad guy who makes gold bullets or in the, you sure, or what?
I wish I had all the answers, Hal.
Um. So, yeah, I knew you had, after you voted, I have a question.
Are you sure? You sure it can wait till after the vote?
I'm sure.
Okay.
Yep. Motion I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So then because there's a lead time, I guess Greg would work with the chief to make sure that the money was actually like applied to the down payment or the payment of those radios and that
Money, the money has to be allocated. It does not have to be spent.
It has to be more than just like in your mind allocated. It has to be committed. And allocated, I think committed is a stronger word than allocated. And um, so I think maybe if the chief ordered the radios right away so that then the
Okay.
Order the radios, give the money, that, in that order. Does that make sense?
We can do that.
Okay.
Give the money and order the radios.
Are we going to give the money and then order?
Yeah, they just get, right, exactly. What I'm trying to say is get the money out of the township treasury.
Okay. We'll make sure. I'll make sure the chief needs it for it.
Yeah, Steve Miller, go on, take the money around.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, uh, we can lose old business. We get to new business.
Wait a minute, I have, I have something under old business, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um. As you have heard, we did work on Old Mill Road, which is the road where Wilcox Salvage Yard is on. And anybody, if you get a chance to drive there, you'll see what beautiful job was done and what, how badly that road needed that job to be done. So it is a safe passable road. It is a smaller road, but it's a safe passable road, and it was done tremendously by an expert company, I believe. I, I viewed it. I even took a video of it, if anybody wants to sit through a two-minute video. However, that was money that was well spent for the township and our, and our roads are very important, as you all know. Uh, it gets everybody from where they're, point A to point B, wherever they're going. So I just want to, I just want to make sure that uh people acknowledge and are aware of what we're doing to try and make roads safer in the township for people to have a look. Thank you.
And I would uh chip in that it also helps to understand that Mill Road is the access to uh several of the undeveloped lots along our industrial commercial corridor. It's just to the west of Old Three-O-Nine. So if there, Old Three-O-Nine to Mill Road is zoned industrial, so we have an industrial area with, which previously had potholes that you would have to use uh gray to get over, sorry.
Commercial, commercial, statement, make the correction. But that is commercial area all the, all the way up to uh forest from uh the old Three-O-Nine.
So we now have a commercial area, which instead of having a pothole, mostly impassable road to a nice new, somewhat thin but passable and updated. Any other business, any other old business? I've known. Okay. And moving on, we get to new business. Uh. I said, the only new business I had was beer, that for, as part of the holiday presentation, a contribution of thirty thousand. Uh, whether that would be in it from ARP money or whether that would be a addition once we get some quotes in on costs to go through the regular budget. Either way. I have no other new business. Anybody else?
I have that one done.
Okay. So, closing your business, and now for the end of the meeting, we get to public comment. If anybody has, please come up.
First of all, I'm going to have to give you the end of your report for Holiday House. And I would just uh take a moment to, to clarify and uh emphasize a couple of things that, that Hal said in his report. We had a great season. Uh, everything worked great. The pool functioned flawlessly. Uh, no incidents of any significance, no injuries. We had a great season. Um. In particular, in terms of budget performance, um, in twenty twenty-three, the two municipalities combined contributed just under a hundred thousand dollars towards the operation of the pool. This year, we are requesting a total of sixty thousand dollars, uh which is thirty thousand dollars from each municipality. That's a significant reduction. And it reflects uh a lot of effort and a determination on the part of the Joint Rec Authority to make the pool as self-sustaining as possible. I want to clarify that thirty thousand dollars is the total amount for the, the season. Uh, the West Rock Hill already contributed thirteen thousand. So the request that we sent you a couple of weeks ago is for an additional seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. That thirty thousand dollars or that sixty thousand dollars reflects entirely um capital improvements, and we itemize them for you. Uh, we did receive uh the contrib, uh the supplemental contribution from Sellersville. And I would request tonight that you approve the additional seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty ones, or fifty cents. That money is needed so that we can uh order a pump for next year. The pump that we uh has been specked out for us by our pool tech, working uh in cooperation with Pent Air Corporation, has a lead time of four to six months. Apparently roughly the same time as to order radios. But uh, so it's important for us to get that ordered now so that we can be sure to have it installed prior to the opening of the twenty twenty-five season. The second request that I would make.
Two and a half minutes are up.
Is that you commit to uh contributing one half of our yearly operating expenses up to a maximum of thirty thousand dollars per year. That allows us to plan and move ahead towards the opening of the pool next year, which we can't do until we have that commitment. Thank you.
I did want to, I could clarify at the prior meeting, there was a question which I got wrong, uh that the budget that we had showed the six, sixty-five hundred dollars as a deposit that was not paid. So that's, that's now the request for, or that now goes into part of that request. I messed up, I messed that up. I'm sorry. We do have a request for the additional seventeen.
This is public comment.
We'll have to put that on for next month.
We may not have the pump in time to decide next month. Had the request for over a month now.
Okay. Thank you, but you are out of order. Uh. Procedurally, then I would ask to, I would make a motion to amend the agenda to consider under new business that don't, that seventeen thousand dollar donation to get the pump for Holiday House. Motion not being seconded, motion dies. Okay, next thing on public comment. Mr. Miller.
Ten dollars, Thousand Acre Road. Back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, I can't remember exactly when the day was. We had some issues with Airbnbs. And we had started talking about resolutions or unordnance to try and control the Airbnbs. Did that ever go anywhere? I, I think it was tabled. And we, and we never did anything else with it. And I'm just wondering if the township would consider taking that up again? I'm hearing a lot of rumors about people wanting to do Airbnbs in our neighborhood, hoods.
I believe that has come up at a couple of planning commission meetings, but not directly as moving forward. I know there was, there is a some discussion and there was some review of other locations, municipalities, versions of
Yeah.
Airbnbs. There was some recent Pennsylvania Supreme Court decisions about Airbnbs from the realtor point of view, but I'm not sure if we have from the realtor point of view, but I'm not sure if we have any updates.
Okay. I would just like the township to consider that because I don't want to see us in that situation.
Okay. Okay.
Shelley Mickles, Simmons Road, Sellersville. I just wanted to bring up that you think the numbers are low, that if you're in Penrich School District and you want to be on the swim team, you have to join Menlo Pool. So that takes a lot of our customers to Menlo. Just wanted to bring that up with our numbers.
Thank you.
Hello. Dennis Van Arstail on Old Mill Road. Nice job. I've been there forty years and that road's been a mess for forty years. Thank you very much.
Proud to say.
Suzanne Clark. I just want to follow up. Ease your mind a little bit as far as the Holiday House pool goes. When I was working over there as manager of that pool, I will tell you that every person who came in who has to sign a waiver to use the pool, the guards would write their name down, the amount that they paid. At the end of the day, Reggie at Sellersville Borough was very efficient. If those names did not total the amount that those persons were supposed to pay each day, she would get upset. So I want you to know that there is a good count. You're going to have that kid that's going to sneak in. It happens all the time. But I wanted to just assure you that that's a very good process that they have in place at that pool. People walk in, they write their name down, and the amount of their charge for that afternoon swim time. So I want to just ease your mind on that.
Thank you. And I would, uh, just to follow up and mention that this is the first year that Holiday House has had electronic payment with a square system, which seems to have, since nobody carries cash and most people don't have a check stuffed in their wallet anymore, that has helped out, uh, quite a bit with, or part of our report, which I didn't go into, was how the square has helped out with people coming in who just want to come in for the day, being able to come in and pay. But again, unfortunately, when somebody's signing a waiver, you usually have the name, the address, and you don't usually include what municipality are you from as part of the waiver in order to track who's coming in from where. We're just happy to have people.
I want to make a, I just want to make a brief statement on this because this is public comment. This is a public comment. I'm not concerned about the person sneaking in. I'm concerned about the pool being used, the numbers of the people that are actually attending the pool. That's what my concern is because we're talking about taxpayer-funded project here. That's what my concern is.
Who paid that fifteen dollars to use that pool that day had Johnny Smith, fifteen dollars.
Is that what it is for, for daily? Okay, okay.
And that sheet of paper went to the borough every evening, and it was totaled up. And if Reggie didn't have the same total as that cash in that envelope, there was extra.
Thank you.
They were very, very efficient, I think, because of their daily. And so I was thinking, I don't know if I can say this or not, when we have everybody sign a waiver when they come in, sign it, maybe just put their address on there. That way we can find out which municipality they're from, keep track of that, that way.
I, I have asked for that in the past, to try and track where, where they're from.
Well, let's put it on the waiver that they have to sign. Does that make a big difference?
Well, it does when you, when you can show how many people from your township are using the pool. Uh-uh. When you're allocating money. I'll, I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Okay.
Cheryl Kigasi, Augustine Road.
May I pull the mic down?
Oh. Cheryl Kigasi, Augustine.
We can hear you, but when it gets played back, all they're going to see is, bye-bye.
That's all. You know, you're talking about this ARP money. If you have this balance, why don't you put it towards pool? You know, I like, I go to the pool, and I enjoy it because it's not full like Menlo. People aren't bumping into each other. I opened up that pool in nineteen seventy-one with my two cousins and her friend, and I don't want to see this thing closed. And I think it'll be ashamed for this community not to have this pool. So I think the money that is left over for this APR, ARP should be going not into the general fund, but towards the pool. I don't hear any mention about money, that money going into the pool. It's going everywhere else in the community, but not the pool.
I believe we have the same, um, in some, in some respect, Holiday House Pool is in the same situation as the fire companies. We need more people. We need more advertising. Our biggest problem is we have a really great pool. We just don't have enough people in it. We have a lot of people coming in from outside the area, but we need to be better at reaching out to the West Rock Hill residents. So fortunately, that's a problem that can be changed with marketing and outreach. It's not a structural problem. It's not that the pool's broken. It's just we need more people to be in it. Or my portion of public comment.
Uh, Rob Fisher, Holiday House Road. Uh, I just want to emphasize several speakers and cite that the pool is a community resource. It's not a profit center. If government is here to serve the people and funds that are similar to ARP are used to, to help people. What this pool offers is a place for young people to go rather than destroy public bathrooms or skateboard down some lady's stairs. Uh, it's, it's there as a resource for parents who want to bring their kids up in a, in a fun environment, in a fulfilling environment, and removing that opportunity by removing funding. Um, even if it's, if it is ARP, it's not a taxpayer fund exclusively paid into by West Rock Hill. It's a national fund. Uh, that's going into the general fund where there is no, uh, set allocations. It, it's lost on the people and it's your decisions as to where that money's spent. I don't understand why you wouldn't consider more seriously funding the pool with that money. Uh, the chairman made a motion, and it wasn't seconded, to even discuss it. And that, that baffles me, why you wouldn't want to give the opportunity to the community to use the pool. Uh, I, I really think it needs to be added to the agenda, uh, as, as a, uh, likely candidate for ARP funds. So.
Coming up on eight twenty, do we have any other?
I had a comment. Um, Tony Bogner, Clive Rabbit.
The, um, the referendum, um, I don't know, I know it's a question, I, I can't answer, ask questions in public comment, but my comment is, I follow Sellersville's, um, minutes. There's no discussion at all about splitting that money. Can you comment on that?
Uh, yes, Mary.
Actually, I was thinking about that. When we answered you, we may have answered too quickly because one of the things in November that the board is going to be looking for, and one of the things they're going to have to consider is how much money Sellersville is making available because you only went out for, for referendum for half of the money that was necessary to do the improvements, not the full amount, right?
We went up to the full amount.
Okay.
But they could borrow less.
Gotcha.
If needed.
All right.
I, I think I've, what had, by what I, the way that I tried to explain this last month is we had a estimate from our usage study, which said about three million to rehab the pool. I've been looking around. I believe that Sauterton Pool just redid theirs with a skim coat, which is about a hundred and seventy-four thousand was the amount for the bid. I'm not sure what their bid actually came in. I know that they got it done, but I wasn't able to track it down in time to get the numbers. But, so three million is the number as a worst-case scenario if we're to do, if we were going to go this alone. Which, again, as I said, uh, compared to inflation adjusted, that's about the same as what it cost to put the pool together in the first place back in the nineteen seventies when we floated a bond, a municipal bond for three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand in nineteen seventies money, three million in current money. So we're out on par. This is simply giving us the, this is giving taxpayers from West Rock Hill, giving West Rock Hill Township Supervisors the authority to investigate this, to figure out how much we're going to need to spend. And that's going to have to, we're going to have to have some discussions with Sellersville Borough about how much do we want to both kick in? Under the previous legal structure with the lease and the bond, the Holiday House paid what it could towards paying down the cost, and then the township and the borough agreed to split any overage that wasn't covered by the income from the pool. Uh, that lease structure ended back in twenty-two, that, back in two thousand. And unfortunately, for twenty years, both the township and the borough were, hooray, we own the pool free and clear. Still need to do capital improvements. So unfortunately, unfortunately, because it was a set bond issue, the amount that the township and borough were contributing was never, uh, increased for inflation. So the fifteen thousand that they spent in the nineteen seventies, which would be a hundred and fifty now, was never increased through the years. So when you look at what Sullivan, what bigger town borough puts towards their pool, what Percocie puts towards their pool, what Sauterton puts toward their pool, because of the financing structure, as Jake, you know, as both, uh, Townships, as both the Township Supervisors and Borough Council, it's not our pool. It's half our pool. So we're kind of stuck with the redheaded stepchild of, well, how many people are we having that's not entirely our uh, responsibility. It's partially their responsibility. Now, the tragedy of the commons, if nobody is actually in charge of it, then we need to, then we need to find somebody who's going to take charge of it, whether that includes going back to the nineteen seventies situation where the Joint Rec Authority owns the pool and we subcontract out the management to the township and the borough because they think they can do it better. That might be, that might be a way of moving this forward.
I want to make known to the public, when you say the words inflation, we're not borrowing three million. It's about six million. The tax is paid back on about, or about six million with the interest for twenty years. And then that also needs, the public needs to know that.
Okay.
The other thing too is that, um, you sat in that meeting at the joint rec meeting, and it was stated that Sellersville would pick up for the slack that West Rock Hill didn't. I just want the board to, to know that. You were there. You know that was said. So that's all I'm saying with the money thing. And, and I commend Jay on the membership because i- if you have a small amount of usage from West Rock Hill, why do we, why are we stuck with paying half of everything of it when the membership is all on Sellersville's side? So that's all my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Eric.
My name is Paul Daniels. I live in Franconia Township. I've been a member of Holiday House Pool since I was twelve years old. Right now I am sixty-six. Um, this is part of a post that I wrote. Um, if Sellersville and West Rock Hill cannot reach a sane solution to Holiday House's fiscal problems, we're going to end up with a large, attractive property sitting idle with a gaping concrete hole in the middle of it. Several summer camps will be without a pool to use. Over twenty-five top-notch young people will be without the summer jobs for which they spent time and money earning three certifications. People from quite a few municipalities will be without a lovely venue in which to relax, exercise, learn to swim, and just enjoy being outdoors. The sheer folly of such a sad prospect is breathtaking. Parks and recreational facilities are a public good. Providing and maintaining them are fundamental responsibilities of municipalities. It is true that not every town can be expected to provide a public pool. Pools are labor-intensive and expensive to operate. But the pools that do not exist need sufficient attention and funding. I am a great advocate of fiscal responsibility, but I am also a great advocate of doing important things and doing them as well as possible. Holiday House is an important community resource. We need to stand by it.
Okay. Any other public comment? Once, twice, three times. All right. Thank you, everybody. That closes the meeting. Actually, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.